Good evening. I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Work Session for November 16th. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Ms. Wright is not in attendance tonight. I got a call from her this afternoon. She had a death in her family, so she asked if I could run the meeting. Before we get started, I would like to have a moment of silence for the Tuscaloosa Valley School District community and victims of the terrible car accident that happened on I-70 on Tuesday morning. So if everyone is willing for that, can we please do a moment of silence because I cannot Thank you, everyone. The first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I motion we consider the consent agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the consent agenda?
I'm sad to see that Mark Baker and Joyce Bukovac in particular are retiring, both wonderful people. But that's kind of tempered by this exciting appointment of a recent graduate. Adi Gonzalez-Low is coming to work for the district she graduated from recently, so that's pretty exciting.
Well, that is exciting.
You know, it's like a changing of the guard kind of thing.
Well, and I certainly wish everyone who retires well. So while we hate to lose them, we also want them to enjoy their time when they leave our district.
And we also always like to celebrate Tiger Nation hitting the road. And so it is really exciting to see that we have got kids going to Chicago, to Cincinnati, and to Powell, Ohio in order to compete. And that is just fantastic, wishing, wish them, wish them well and great, great experiences and great memories.
And safe travels.
And safe travels.
Yes, and safe travels.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Gaynor for providing some clarity on the $776,000 fund transfer and what that was all about, which is basically a safety grant transferring from last year's fund to a fund that they created this year. Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that additional information.
Is that state money or federal money originally?
Federal.
Federal, okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the consent agenda?
No, I want to get to these kids in front of us.
All right, well, Mr. Gaynor, can you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
And now we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the M-SAN update.
Yes, we are very excited to have students from M-SAN, both at our middle schools and also the high school here, to provide an update on the things that they have been working on and plan to work on this school year. Everyone knows that M-SAN is one of our anchor student organizations. We are one of about 25 districts across the country that have students who are in the M-SAN organizations, who are working on service projects, who are learning about their cultures, who are banding together to succeed, to do well, and to serve others. And so I know many of the leaders here from the high school, some of the leaders from the middle schools are very excited to hear what you guys have been up to. I believe this is our first time having middle school students present, so I'm very excited that we will have our youngest leaders in M-SAN sharing their experiences. So I'm going to run the PowerPoint and just say next slide, or pause, or go back, whatever you need me to do. And we will get started. And from joining us, I will allow the team to introduce themselves. I'll do that, Mrs. Robinson. I'll turn it over to you while I get us set up.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. So I'm Ms. Robinson, I'm from Monticello Middle School.
Can you just speak into the microphone?
Do I hold it, push it?
No, just slide it over to you.
Slide it closer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Ms. Robinson. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
From Monticello Middle School. I've been with M-SAN for quite some time, quite some time. And it's been a pleasure and a joy as I see the high schoolers, they were once our middle school M-SAN babies, so I'm excited to see them as well flourishing. And I have, she has a whole presentation where they're going to introduce themselves. I'm eighth grade ELA, and I had Ms. Serini's son.
Mm-hmm.
It's a joy to have him in class. So I'm going to turn it over to Leha.
And all I ask is please speak into the mics, just because people watch this at home afterwards, and if you don't speak in the mic, then it'll just be silence, and we don't want that.
Good evening, Superintendent Kirby, board members, district leaders, and community members. I'm Leha, I've been in M-SAN, I'm in eighth grade, and I've been in M-SAN since the sixth grade. My name is Cassidy, I'm in eighth grade, and I've been in M-SAN since this year.
Monticello.
Oh, and I go to Monticello Middle School.
Good evening, my name is Kennedy Brown, I'm in eighth grade, and I have been in M-SAN since the sixth grade.
Good evening, my name is Gavin Brown, I've been in M-SAN since sixth grade, hopefully eighth grade as well. I go to Roxborough Middle School in the seventh grade.
Next slide.
Okay.
I would say my, some of my favorite, some of the parts I liked about the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame were the, hmm, how to put it, the inclusive, the inclusivity, I would say, how there was not only, not only, you know, rock stars, you know, but also hip-hop involved. And how they also allowed us to, you know, look around as far as we wanted, learn about whatever we wanted as well, and ask, they let us ask a lot of questions, too. So I would say, but my favorite part had to be the, in the auditorium, where we got to watch a video about all of them.
Next slide.
We're proud wearing our new M-SAN shirts to our eighth-grade-only trip to Step Africa.
Next slide.
So my advisor...
Move the mic closer to you, I'm sorry.
My advisors was Ms. Gregory and Ms. Austin. What we're thankful for from our advisors is like how they, how do I say it? It's how they always make sure that we're on top of things, because we know that like, yes, we want to achieve being a minority and being students, but at the same time, it's like they also care about our well-being as people. And also with our advisors, they always make sure that we're open to other opportunities, and maybe opportunities that they didn't get to have, which is great, but it also inspires us to want to push more, but also the stuff that we learn about from them, it makes us want to share it with the world as well.
And I would say that that's both schools.
Yeah, both schools.
Next slide.
This is our biannual M-SAN trip, where we go to Detroit, Michigan, and we visit the Charles H. Wright Museum of African-American History, and we go enjoy dinner at the Golden Corral. And my favorite part of this was getting to go like around the museum and look at the different, like, people and things like that. Black Enough is an essential collection of captivating stories about what it's like to be young and black in America. This poetry book also touches on the power of representation while divulging into commonly shared stories. Chasing the Roots of My Heritage gracefully connects the authentic feeling of what it's like to be black in America.
Next slide, so you can see the poetry book. So this was last year, Black Enough, Black is Enough. This year it's going to be the Chasing the Roots of My Heritage, and it's talking about HBCUs.
Is that Anna Gregory's daughter?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
How cool.
Yes. Next slide.
This month in M-SAN, for November, we'll be learning, well, our schedule is to M-SAN Family Information Night, a speaker series by Mr. Smith, a video study smart, Keep Grinded by Jeremy Anderson, and also Exploring Abolitionist.
I would also like to say that every month we have a theme, and so as you can see, September is motivation, October's goal-setting, and November is thankfulness. And we were, we went, our thankfulness for November was to the field trip to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and that was our first time going. And because of hip-hop's 50th year of anniversary, we thought it was just cause to also introduce them to the rock and roll. And they were just so impressed with our students that they are hoping that we come back next year.
Nice.
Next slide.
For M-SAN, what was something that was put positive messages in the lockers to, you know, spread our, well, I would say that the community M-SAN that we have at Roxborough is a positive one, a supportive one, and also a achieving one, I would say. And the message, the messages we put on the lockers is to spread that, you know, feeling that our community gives us.
So during unity, the day spreading kindness, we decided to, with both schools, to celebrate unity by putting kind words on lockers throughout the whole school. That's a representation of that.
That's great.
Next slide.
So for the next three months, the themes are Kwanzaa for December, and we're going to go see The New Color Purple at Cedar Lee Theater. And then for January, the theme is New Beginnings, and we're going to the MLK Celebration Act Kent State. And we're also going to be visiting CSU. And for February, we're going to be honoring and celebrating black history by going...
Last year, we did that.
To Step Africa at the, at the Playhouse for an eighth-grade-only field trip.
So last year we did Step Africa. Ms. Kirby asked that we kind of highlight both years, last year and this year. We were able to see, and I would like Leha to kind of tell her feelings about it, but Dr. Bernice King, Martin Luther King's daughter, spoke at Kent State, and the high school was there as well as the middle school, and they interviewed the students, and they were in paper, well, they said they were going to put them in papers, and we were also seen on the news. One of the coworkers came and showed us where they had, kind of showcased us on, I think, ABC 6:00 p.m. News. So that was last year. So this year, we're hoping that maybe we could also go to Kent to celebrate their annual celebration at Kent. And then you tell us your favorite, tell me what you told, tell them what you told me.
My favorite thing about the MLK celebration with Bernice King was getting to hear like about her life story and how it was growing up. And we were in like this big auditorium, listening to her speech, and it was really cool.
What about the food?
Oh, yeah, the food was really good, too.
Let's get to what matters here.
So they got a chance to see how college students eat.
Mm-hmm.
Next slide.
This is an example of Team Summit. One is to respect everyone's voice, equity time to talk and share ideas, think time, then share time, and don't forget food before me. When you hear power of the mind, like, what do you think it means?
The ability to think your way out of a problem, or to imagine a different way of being or way of going in the world.
So what we do is usually, especially when we go on a field trip, whether it's, last year we were able to go see Woman King and Wakanda Forever, when we go to like the field trips, we come back and we have questions and we discuss, and so that's a part of the Team Summit, what Kennedy was trying to kind of give you a question as, we also present questions to them and do a Q and A session. Also with the book, we do that as well. We give different chapters, and then we come as a group and discuss so that you get a chance to hear everyone's point of view. Next slide.
This was last year when we went to Kent State to see the Bernice King speech. This was right before we left to get on the bus, and that's seventh, eighth, and sixth graders all outside.
M-SAN scholars will be leading a building tour for Superintendent Kirby and BLE members and the mayor at, I don't know what building this is, but yes.
Next slide.
Oh, my gosh. In March, we will be, oh, the theme for March is Women of Color in History. The theme for April is Effort is Everything, and in May, the theme is the end-of-the-year celebration.
Next slide.
This here was from our speak series. His name is Dr. James Butch Rossar, a world-renowned surgeon. He came and spoke with us at Roxborough, and we were on a Google Meet with him, and he kind of just shared, like, he kind of just shined the light on what it is to be a, a black surgeon, a very well-known surgeon. He's also the grandfather of one of the students that go here. He kind of just let us know like what is possible, and yeah, because you don't really hear a lot about black surgeons, so it's very important to hear the diversity of what it's like being in the medical field, and it can also inspire others to what they can also do.
Okay, next slide.
This was last year's eighth-grade-only Playhouse Square visit, where they went to go see Step Africa for their, and towards the end of the year for their field trip.
And this year, we're going to see unauthorized biographies of different people. One of them is Barack Obama, so we're excited. And that's February 27th.
At Playhouse Square?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's the last slide.
And we also have a social justice where it's virtual, that we'll be able to watch that on Tuesdays when we meet as well.
Thank you all for presenting. Now, the next part of the work session is when we ask questions and engage in dialogue. So I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm really glad that you're getting to go to Kent State University. I went there, so that's my alma mater. It's a great school.
Well, I'm really glad that, it seems like a lot of your learning is happening outside the classroom in sort of real life, and that's giving you sort of something that you don't, I mean, you could read it in books, maybe you could hear from a teacher, but seeing it firsthand is a whole different thing, makes it more believable. So I'm happy that you've got that opportunity for you guys. And I'm also happy to hear from eighth graders, and I know you're all eighth graders, but I know that you've got sixth and seventh grade in here.
We have one seventh. Gavin is seventh.
Gavin is in seventh grade.
Sorry about that. I mean, this really tees you up for a really great high school experience, and it makes you college-ready or career-ready. I mean, you're really getting a jump on things. It's kind of like a double-secret club, but hopefully it's not so double-secret anymore, and more people are going to get into this.
Yes.
I also love when I hear from M-SAN students, it seems like your excitement sort of feeds on each other. I mean, and I think that really, really, really helps. I mean, you guys are special kids, it's really great to see all the special things that you do.
And I just want to reiterate that this year, we've also decided to partner with Cleveland State, their engineering department. And there are like five different, when I was coming through school, it was just mechanical, chemical, there's one more.
Civil.
Electrical, and civil. But now it's like two more that they've added. And so they will get, they will be able to see the different labs, and they will get a tour of the engineering. So hopefully in January, we'll be able to do that before testing and all of that starts. So I'm excited about that.
You have to get your math.
Yeah. And you know about the robotics class, right?
Yes. So let's go and say who's in what math and if they're in robotics. Start with you, Cassidy.
I'm in geometry and I am in robotics.
Isn't that fun?
Yeah. That class is amazing.
I'm also in geometry and in robotics.
I'm in pre-algebra and not, and not robotics.
I'm in geometry and I'm not in robotics. I didn't even really know that they had that.
There's a club and there's a class. It's at Monty only this year.
But I think they both have robotics clubs.
We're working on it.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure both schools have robotics clubs, because I believe Roxborough has the Lego platform and Monticello has the Vex platform.
Right. So there is an after-school club at Rox, but not a class yet.
So for your speaker series, do you have one speaker a month, a couple a year?
So every month, we have a speaker. Mr. Smith, who is a football coach over at Heights, he will be our speaker on Tuesday.
Nice.
He has a dynamic story, and the students love to hear him speak. We've had students come back and speak, as well as parents that are from the community as well. So we try and make sure that once a month, both schools that they have a speaker.
So I'd love to know what your budget is and stuff like that, but how about a quick, really quick overview of how this has led in the middle schools? I mean, I saw it, it looks like two teachers, two, two staff members per building. Any other involvement, roughly how many students are involved? I mean, roughly, okay? It's kind of putting you on the spot, but I don't mean to do that. And Liz can always get the information for us later, which is perfectly, a perfectly fine answer.
So when it comes to the budget, that would be...
I was kind of kidding about the budget.
Ms. Gould and Ms. Kirby?
Yeah.
Signature? We do have a budget, so they, we are aware of that, but as far as how that goes, students also don't mind paying for things when we go places as well. They're excited, too, as well.
Is that problematic, though? I mean...
Or potentially?
No.
Okay.
They like to eat.
Yeah, that's true.
And we try and find things, they, they do have, we're a Title I school, so they do have, which I found out when I was doing the Rock and Roll Hall, that next year we'll be able to go under Title I budget. So we do have money that's funded through Title I. And then the principals, which I learned tonight also, they have a budget for things as well. So we're excited about, you know, saying, hey, can we get money for this, and showing the reason why. So we have to have goals and standards put in place when we present the field trip to Ms. Gould and Ms. Kirby, as well as our principals, they have to sign off on that. So it's planned, we have to have our buses in place. As far as the students, maybe Leha can kind of, because sports play, so with middle schools a little tricky. Sports play, they play a great deal, there's no after-school bus. So we meet, Monticello, we meet weekly. So if you can't come, unless it's a staff meeting, and I think Rox is bi-weekly, but if it's a staff meeting, we don't meet. And then with students, it just varies, it's sixth, seventh, and eighth. We're still growing, so when students find out, and field trips usually encourage students to want to come and join. And so I have students, I recruited two more eighth-grade young ladies today that came and said, we heard how much a great time you had, we want to be a part of M-SAN. So, but we do, when we first start, we reach out to the math teachers of algebra, pre-algebra, geometry, and we start there, because that was our target goal for our students in those And I would say, how many would you say roughly starting off, on the, on the average you're seeing, right, Tuesday, how many students show up that don't have to, because they'll come and sign up and say, I got to go to basketball, but they do come, say, I'm here, they stay maybe 10 minutes. Then we always give them a snack, that's encouraging, so they like to eat, so chips and Capri Sun is, is put into our budget as well, that they get at the end of, when they're leaving. But students that have to go to practice, we still want them to feel a part of M-SAN. So they still have to check in with the advisors and let us know that this is where they are, that they just didn't, not come for a good reason. And you can tell it's kind of, we're still building on six, so we, we're doing pretty good this year with sixth graders, they're very interested, this is a great group of sixth graders. You want to add to?
So like, for after-school sports, at least for me, because I did volleyball, we would go sometimes for like 10, 15 minutes, because school gets out at 2:45 and practice starts at 3:00. And also sometimes we would just kind of like check in, just to know that like we tried to come, but we weren't able to due to like sports and things like that.
Game.
Yeah, and like games.
Mm-hmm.
And if there's, if there's a game, you need time to change into your uniforms and warm up and, you know, be ready.
About how many kids come to your meetings?
15 to 20 is like the average.
That's good.
And the shirts are definitely a walking billboard. They want to know wherever we go, what does it mean, what does it stand for, and we represent Heights very well. So we just ordered some new shirts. These were last year's. Before that, they were black and white, now they're going to be black and gold, so we try and change up with the years with.
Do Monticello and Roxborough Middle School students have lots of opportunities to come together? Is it the joint trips, or is there anything else? I know there is some stuff online, too, where there's some online M-SAN meetings across the network.
You're talking about the social justice?
Yeah, the social justice.
So usually I let my eighth graders, like, Kelsey, raise your hand. Chelsea, I'm sorry, Chelsea, in the back, she did the social justice for Monti.
Okay.
Leha, they, the seventh graders usually observe, so that the eighth graders are more the ones that take charge. It is online, it's through Zoom, where they are meeting with M-SAN students from all over the country. The eighth graders, where they'll talk about, I had a chance to see it in person, but, and there's so many series a month. And this year, Roxborough is going to take the lead. Monticello has done it for two years in a row.
Okay.
And you have to have a service project, and they get to hear speakers. You may want to talk about it, because you sat in on it last year, some of the things, because a teacher is not there, so they usually sit outside of...
Their own coordinator, right, yeah, that's right.
The library is where I usually set them up.
Yeah.
We would go on this Zoom meeting, and it was mainly like the eighth graders talking, but it was this big Zoom meeting with like a whole bunch of M-SAN advisors and M-SAN students from like a whole bunch of different districts. And they would like ask questions and about M-SAN and just about school in general. And the seventh graders would like sit in on it and listen to it, because we were going to be doing that in the future.
And just to clarify, so when you guys do these trips, you do them together, both Roxborough and Monticello?
Yes.
That's excellent.
Great.
I love that.
That's when we come together, and Kennedy has been so excited to reunite with Cassidy since...
Not Sidney.
Huh?
Not Sidney.
Yeah, not Sidney. Since fourth grade, so she was...
Third grade, I think.
Third grade. So she was excited tonight to come together with Kennedy, Kennedy and Cassidy.
So when I'm not being on the Board of Education, I'm an eighth-grade teacher, and I got to tell you guys how impressed I am with just your presence, and I think that these experiences that you're getting may be impacting you in ways that you don't even recognize, because it is, I mean, you are handling yourself so incredibly well, and this is not easy, and you're killing it. So thank you. I mean, this is just fantastic. I, you may have seen me looking at this, and that's because... I, you may have seen me looking at this, and that's because I hope that one of the people that you will learn about on your, I believe it was March that you're going to be doing Famous African-American Women from History. I would love for you to learn about Famous African-American Woman from Today, whose name is Ambassador Gina Amber Crombie Wynn Stanley. Who is the United States Ambassador to the country of Malta. And she, before that, was Chief Diversity Officer for the Department of State, which is a really big deal. And she also is a Heights High grad from 1976.
That should come first in the list of accomplishments.
That's what led to the rest of it. And she is a fantastic, influential African-American woman who is out there kicking butt and taking names today. And she walked the same halls that you all are walking. And I just, I hope that you, you take a minute to get to know her. Because she, she's worth knowing about. So she, her, she, her title is Ambassador. And her name, first name is Gina. And it's Abercrombie, just like in Fitch. And Dash Wynn Stanley. And she came when she was inducted into our Distinguished Woman in the Hall of Fame. And so we've got the video footage of that and her talking about her experience at Heights High and how it impacted her. And she didn't know that she was going to go on to great things when she was in eighth grade in our schools, just like the rest of us, but she did. And so I would love for you to get to know her a little bit better.
Definitely will look into that.
That's great.
Well, I want to thank you guys for presenting this evening. I could not have presented to a Board of Education when I, when I was in seventh grade nor eighth grade. And I am extremely impressed with your poise and your clarity in sharing your experiences. To Mrs. Robinson, thank you for preparing the students and for your commitment. It's clear.
Thank you for having us.
To students and to, into this unique experience for students. This is an experience that not many seventh and eighth graders have, nor high school students, quite frankly, across the country. So it is unique. It's one, something that is unique, unique to our area. Shaker Heights is the only other school in Ohio. Actually Canton is, is in MCAN now too. That is a part of this network. I really appreciated hearing about the exposure, the fellowship. It's clear you all have built a community. I also heard the scholarship and the opportunity for academic enrichment for the students. And then, you know, just the commitment too as well. And I will tell you, you guys will find that these will be experiences that you can grow on. You'll continue to develop and contribute. So thank you for sharing your experiences. And if, if there's anything that we can do to help you, you know, Mrs. Robinson knows how to get in contact with both myself and Dr. Gould for any other needed support. And right behind you, you have the high school MCAN students who I know are supportive of you guys and the high school MCAN advisors who I'm sure are already thinking about welcoming you guys next year when you come, come to high school. In two years, when you come to high school, yes. So with that, we're going to close out the middle school portion. I will ask you guys to, I will bid you farewell. And I know we're going to take a picture while the high school team sets up.
We give them a round of applause.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
We're just going to pause for a second while we switch.
Yeah, we need an extra chair, at least one.
Here's one.
Yep, we got one.
Watch this tape later, won't be able to hear you, so.
Before we even start, the tennis shoe and T-shirt, I got to give you props.
Yeah, those shoes are pretty cool. I love it.
Are you ready? Yes, that means yes? All right. So we are back down to part two of our work session. And now we have the Cleveland Heights High School students here for their MCAN updates. I'm going to turn it over to you guys. Just tell me next slide when you're ready for me to advance.
Hi, I would like to thank you guys for all having us here. And thank you for the students and parents and everybody that are watching to listen to us. I'm Marley. I'm a junior at Cleveland Heights High School. And just a little bit about MCAN is it's really just a big family and has brought so much and has taught us so much and teaches us every day just to grow as people and to learn more about us and our communities and culture. It really does take, go into depth about what we should learn and serious topics and just important topics. And it just brings a greater understanding of what's going around in our everyday lives. And it has just like built a big family for at least me and has brought me with many trusted adults and just built relationships and friendships with especially these people here and just even in MCAN altogether. So MCAN definitely is amazing and one of Heights' greatest organizations that I have to say. But these are all of our panels, well, the guests and, do you want me to say your name? Okay, so.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gavin McIntyre. I'm a junior at Heights High as well. And this is my second year at MCAN, surprisingly as a leader. So. For, we know we're in the beginning.
Hello, peoples. My name is Isaiah Bennett. It's a pleasure to meet you guys and I am a sophomore at Cleveland Heights High School.
How long have you been at MCAN?
And this is my second year at MCAN.
Hello, everyone. My name is Juliana Madlock. This is actually my second time presenting, guys. I know it's a pleasure to have me back. And I've been in MCAN since sixth grade and I'm a senior.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alana Gaynor. This is also my second time presenting here for MCAN. And I am a senior at Cleveland Heights High School and I have been in MCAN since seventh grade.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jayron Ohr. I'm an 11th grader at Cleveland Heights High School. This is my second year in MCAN and also my second year being a board member. So thank you for having me.
Hello, everybody. I am Jalen Putnam. This will be my fifth year in MCAN. I've been in here since I was in sixth grade and I am a sophomore.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chelsea Gibson. I've also been in MCAN since sixth grade. I'm a, I'm a sophomore at Cleveland Heights High School.
You seniors, can you share if you have plans about what next year is going to hold for you yet? I'm dying to know.
Yes, I hope to attend the University of Puerto Rico in my West Puerto Rico. And I also hope to run track there.
For me, I'm looking at a lot of schools right now. Wash U is pretty high on the list. I really like their philosophy, politics, and economics major. So I think, I thought it would be like a really fun experience for me to get to know more about like how all of those things, like the interplay between those three really important subjects. And eventually have that be the foundation for my law school experience.
With that sort of a degree, you'll rule the world.
For sure.
Just saying.
Oh, I didn't say what I was planning on saying. I plan to study sociology also.
Thank you.
I can talk now?
Yes.
So it is the, it is only the beginning of the school year, especially, we didn't have as much meetings as expected for MCAN this year yet. But I do feel like that we did a lot. We did, we made a lot of progress this year. And now that we were able to go to the conference this year, it is hu, it is huge to go to the conference, by the way. I'm, I'm honored to be part of this action plan for this year and I'm happy to be launching it next, after Christmas break. But apart from that, it's been huge that we got a bunch of more kids to join MCAN this year. So I'm guessing the freshman, the freshman group is, they helped a lot in that. The conversations that we have in MCAN are very impactful and it teaches us a lot more than we would know about the subject, like Palestine, Palestine and all that and Israel. I guess we were able to show our presence more throughout the community. Like we went to, some of us went to the Psycho Breaker for the Young Black Minds and how we can improve on that. And how we can express ourselves more in the community. We went to the City Club this Tuesday, which was, which was very informative, especially for our juniors and seniors this year. Not bad. We also, we also had, what's it called? I can't remember. I'm so, I'm so sorry. I guess that's actually all, all we, we've attended this year, like I said, it is only the beginning of the year. But we are also excited to be doing a bunch more, such as the annual Black History Month event that we have, you know, a little bit of activities here and there for the month. And it brings us more as a family and we get to know, know each other much more than we would do just instead of, you know, saying hi in the halls. We get to talk to each other, we get to know what we do in our regular lives. And I think it brings, it brings us all closer, like Marley said, it makes us family. And that's, that's about it.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add that you mentioned Ambassador Gina Amber Crombie Wynn Stanley. And earlier this spring, we actually met her. MCAN was able to go to a field trip hosted by the City Club where we got to meet her and engage in conversation. So.
Pretty amazing woman, right?
I heard her.
It was, it was very impactful, like it was, it was very touching.
It's not just the Kelseys.
So I am here today to speak about my experience with the Amazing MCAN Conference. MCAN had a, held a conference of multiracial school districts that came together to eliminate racial opportunity gaps in their schools. And this trip, I just want to get this off my chest, was beyond amazing. I, I'm having a decent year so far and this trip really just blew it up for me as I had a great time with my now family. But one of the reasons I've loved this trip so much is because it's so much diversity. And there's just a lot of, we have problems, you know? You know what I mean, guys? So our squad's a bunch of problems and when we introduced our problems, it was a bunch of people trying to give answers. But with them answers, there was other people to contradict those answers and just give us multiple viewpoints, which is amazing. That's what you need. You just need everyone's opinion so we could just try to all come together. And that's what the MCAN Conference really helped us with. Another reason why I really, really love this conference was it was a great mental break from school and other problems everyone may be having. I have a tough schedule, I would say. I'm a sophomore, so I take a bunch of honors classes and I really do get stressed sometimes, you know? And with things, it's just, you got to keep up and if you fall behind, it's, it's really bad. And this conference, it just, it was a really debrief getaway, I could say. It helped me with like almost all my school problems and I was ready to come back into my learning environment and really produce the best of me I can, which is amazing. It was a great feeling. And my final reason and the most important is MC, that MCAN Conference, it made me, sorry. It made me have a feeling of belonging. And once in a while, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They made me feel belong. As a young teen, I, I tend to overthink a lot, you know? You know what I mean? I just don't, I, your mind could really be the devil sometimes when it comes to overthinking. And as my shirts say, they really pushed the idea that you belong here and it, man, it was amazing. Because I feel like I have a purpose and I feel like I could overcome everything once I came back from that trip. I'm just very blessed for the opportunity that my peers presented me. My MCAN group is amazing. I wouldn't have liked, I wouldn't be here without you guys. And thank you guys for giving us the opportunity. It was really amazing.
Fantastic. Thank you for sharing that.
He really did it, guys. I feel like that just goes to show how the trip really did bring us together. But yeah, we could go to the next slide. And now we're going to get down to business, guys, to talk about our action plan that we were culminating during the, the entire time that we were on the trip. So the name for our action plan is Healthy Heights. And the, I guess the slogan for our action plan is "High School is Not the Pinnacle of Your Life." Because we, with this action plan, we really want to push that we know that it is easy to get stuck where we are in high school as far as, as students. And there is so much life to come after high school and the problems that we are having right now is not going to be there for the rest of our lives. And I know maybe to you guys, you might understand that, but you know, from a high school standpoint, it is easy, very easy to get stuck in the problems that you're dealing with. So the basis for our action plan was to encourage students to really believe that they are, they are players in their own lives and they are able to, not, I guess manipulate is used in a negative connotation, but in a good connotation here. To manipulate your life to how you want it to be. So to be able to see clearly enough to make the decisions to better your life. Especially as young black students, where oftentimes people can look at us differently, even without us really trying to. It is very important that we learn how to, you know, just move throughout our lives. And we're going to be dealing with problems for our entire lives. So our action plan was really helping to give us the tools that we need.
All right, and the whole rationale behind this plan is like, well, when we were in Wisconsin, we came together in our little meeting room that they gave us. I think the, one of the first goals. I think the, one of the first goals or not goals, but issues at our school that we were gravit, that we gravitated towards was the like constant occurrences of violence between students because that's a prevalent issue, as I'm sure you know. And we kind of wanted to examine what the causes may be. And one of the largest causes was, of course, there may be like some issues with mental health in our schools. Because the cornerstone of success and happiness in general is ultimately good mental health. But we're like beginning to realize that a lot of students at our school don't really have the resources or understanding they need to be able to develop that good mental health. So, our goal is to give them those resources. And we especially wanted to go after this from a mental health standpoint because like, as you all know, again, our school is like predominantly black. And in the black community, mental health is kind of stigmatized. And like its significance is understated to a large extent. And it's obviously had ruinous impacts on our youth. So, we want to work to remedy that. And yes, the ultimate goal is to kind of heal our community. So, like, students are able to navigate through life happily. And not even just happily, just not being miserable, not being conflicted, you know? Because it's unrealistic to be like happy all the time, of course. But we just want students to be able to, again, navigate through life responsibly and be successful in their learning environment and not distracted by what may be going on like in their minds and like whatever inner conflict they may be having. We want them to be able to resolve that and to know where to go and know that they have somewhere to go if they are having issues.
Thank you. And we figured by providing students with multiple different opportunities to develop healthy coping, you know, skills and mechanisms and mental health maintenance skills, that they can ultimately improve their attitudes and their, you know, overall boost our school's culture and our school's economy. And most importantly, our school's academic performance. And obviously, with each and every one of you guys' support, we will be able to take our MCN idea and turn that into our MCN Healthy Heights Action Plan.
You can go to the next slide. Okay, so our first step, our major action step in our action plan is our MCN pop-up, well, club pop-up. So, for this event, we will host like kind of a club fair where all of our clubs at our schools are able to come and give information about their club and, and the things that they do in their club, the activities they do. And then our second action step is our Healthy Heights Week. So, for Monday, we have Mindful Monday. So, on that day, we may do like more conscious moments. So, really taking the time to view different aspects of your life and maybe share with others so that you can be mindful of other situations and maybe not judge based off a first base like thing. And then Tuesdays, we have Tranquil Tuesday. So, because tranquility is being calm, we were thinking guided meditation, basically anything to just calm the nerves. That can reduce like a lot of fights in our schools, a lot of pent up anger and emotions. For Wednesday, we have Wind Down Wednesday. So, that will be yoga and music, just a way to calm our bodies because it is the middle of the week. We've made it through half. It's a way to refresh our bodies to make it through the rest of the week. Then we have Thankful Thursday. And that will be, we could do appreciation stations, gratitude jars or journaling, just ways to thank others. You can even thank yourself, you know? Just any, appreciate any and everything that you can. And Fridays, we have Feeling Yourself Friday. On these days, this will be, could be a full packed day. It's really just a day to, as stated before, improve mental health. A lot of our students have may suffer with insecurities and things like bullying in our school. So, it's a way to promote self-love, self-care. So, we would do barber shop or beauty shop for the girls, barber shop for the boys. They could do haircuts or guided makeup tutorials, skincare, all things that pertain to self-care and self-love.
To evaluate this, we will start with our pre-cycle survey in which we will present this with our MCN club pop-up, as Jalen once previously said. With that, we will have a QR code which students can scan. And we will encourage them to participate in the survey where we can learn what they want to experience with the Healthy Heights. We will also have a post-cycle survey. After each Healthy Heights session, they will be able to scan the QR code once again and take a survey on their experience with it, what they feel needs to change or what they just really like about it. And the last part of our evaluation would be overall cultural data of our school. Basically, the climate data that we have in our school of a lot of referrals in-school and out-of-school suspensions, which actually do come from the fights and the violent nature within our school. With this, we want to lower the data and bring down the referrals in-school, out-of-school suspensions and the behavioral tardies and such. And to continue, the key people we need to connect with are our school principals, our deans, our superintendents, avid elective teachers, professionals to carry out the sessions, and most importantly, you guys, the Board of Education. Oh, wait, yes, I saw you. With approval to carry out Healthy Heights from our superintendents and head principal, others like deans, elective teachers, and avid teachers can endorse and encourage students to participate in Healthy Heights. From the Board of Education, we need money to carry this out as well as for MCN as a whole. Our current remaining budget is zero dollars. We need money in relation for Healthy Heights. We need money in relation for Healthy Heights to provide professional instruction for our students so they have the best experience possible and healthy snacks, of course, to enrich, you know, their bodies. For MCN, we need money for our future field trips, the busing after hours in case we have college trips that run overtime and incidentals like snacks for the meetings. Thank you to the Board of Education on behalf of MCN for the amazing opportunity to go on this enriching trip, the National MCN Trip, for the money you have provided for MCN and your future contributions to our mission. Next year, the National MCN Trip will take place in Michigan, a busing distance. Our hope because of this is that we will be able to take at least twice as many kids as we have this year and enrich more minds. This experience was wonderful. And I have to say personally, I grew from this. I, like Isaiah said, I feel like I belong. This is my family right here. MCN as a whole is my family. And even I feel like I have, like, the National MCN is my family. This is where I belong at. This is the club for me, and I love it here. But as this experience was wonderful and provide our MCN scholars, all of us, with personal growth, which more MCN scholars should be able to experience with this trip.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I mean, this is, it's intimidating to come and speak before us because somehow we're important. Even more important than that, you've really opened yourselves up to show us how important MCN is to you. And, and that vulnerability is, is hard. So, thank you for, for that because it really hits home. Being a teenager is never easy under the best of circumstances. And your lives are way more difficult than our lives were when we were teenagers. The world is just harder to navigate. And you have more things to juggle and balance. When do you imagine, anticipate, plan Healthy Heights to happen?
We were hoping to launch after winter break. So, our MCN club pop-up would be after winter break is what we're saying. Yeah. And then after that, we would start our, our cycle of sessions. So, we would do one per week. So, it would be a Mindful Monday on the first day. And then the next week, we would do a Tranquil Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, then you'd end up with five weeks worth of special days?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that would not only spread it out to make it easier for us to track the data, but also, I feel like give it time for us to talk about it. Because while we were at the MCN Conference, we presented our action plan and we received feedback from other MCN students. And most of the questions were about how would we get students involved or like engaged in our sessions? And I feel like one thing that we did learn at the MCN Conference was that the best thing that we can use is our voice. And so, if we're able to talk about it enough and explain enough how much it really is important, then students will be interested.
And presumably, your first Monday event will then lead to a lot of chatter amongst students so that the next week on Monday, they're like, oh, aren't you doing something today?
Right, that gives people time to get excited.
And then you can say, no, 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 come back tomorrow. It's Tuesday next weekend. It's Tuesday. Do you, I assume you're going to need time to drum up a list of the professionals you were talking about in order to contact them and find out what their schedules are and when they could come. Would this be during the school day or after the school day?
Some sessions will happen during the school day depending on what the session is. Like, if we were doing yoga and stuff, that would probably be after school. But with that being said, MCN does have connections. So, like, we know Judge Dawson, who actually has the Dawson Foundation. And he also leads yoga classes. So, that was like an example of a professional that we were thinking about bringing in. He's come to our schools multiple times to speak to students. So, yeah.
Okay. Cool. So, you're already, there's a lot bubbling.
Yeah.
That's great.
We also planned to do the weekly things like during our lunch periods because those tend to be the periods where we have like the most fights, the, the most like high emotions are during, usually during those periods. So, it'd be nice to try and combat that with our Healthy Heights Week.
So, it's one week and each day of the week will be those things.
And if you want to start this after winter break, when are you going to do your pre-cycle survey to have that baseline of data?
That would be done during the club pop-up. So, we're planning to do the club pop-up as just kind of like a let-in note to all the students, like everything that we have available. And so, our MCN conference theme was "You Belong Here." So, we wanted to make sure that all the students knew what was available so that if there was something that they felt like they were interested in, they would be able to join and realize that there is something here for you.
Do you think that the student body in general is not aware of all of the many clubs that are?
No, I think there are, but I feel like it's just not talked about enough. Like, with our school days, I mean, we have announcements. And but at the end of the day, we only have four minutes to walk the halls. And we have forty-six minutes a period. So, it's kind of like we always do have a lot going on. So, but a lot of students don't go home right after school. Like, they're either involved in something already or they're hanging around. So, for the students that are hanging around, look what we have.
Then they should join a club. There's got to be something that will attract each kid, right? So, I love this. It's like, you know, we have college fairs, we have career fairs, let's have a club fair. This sounds wonderful.
So, so are you thinking not only to do what, to do what Healthy Heights? There's, there's a certain expectation that you have to sort of like calm behavior. That's sort of what I get a sense. But what about adding to your numbers? What about recruiting people to get, to be part of your family, to be part of MCN? Is that, is that also part of this too?
Ultimately, ultimately. Because like with our, with the, you know, the club pop-up shop, it's pretty much for people to be able to go around in our gymnasium and look at all the different clubs that we have. Like, there's free speech. A lot of people don't know about free speech. There's poetry. There are so many different clubs that our school offers, even robotics. Like, that was the one that we were talking about earlier. And there's people that might love those things, but they don't even know that they exist at our school. And so, that's the purpose of the, you know, the club pop-up shop. And we wanted to, it wanted, we wanted it to kind of be like MCN Presents, like, so it's almost like a promotion of our own thing. But it's, we're also promoting the school. And ultimately, that is our goal to bring the school from a lower level and, you know, elevate, elevate and get, and to let people know that this is what we're doing and we want you to come and join.
And also, a lot of students in MCN talk about MCN all the time. So, if you're in MCN, you're going to talk about MCN and you're going to bring your friends to MCN meetings.
And people recognize you for that. Like, I go around the school and people are, aren't you from MCN? Like, yeah, I am.
So, the theme that just really struck my heart hard was how many times the word "family" was mentioned. It was like really powerful to me. Because, you know, I went to Heights and I want that sense of family. You know, I'm still best friends with the same guys I've been best friends with since second grade. And when we get together, we turn into fourteen-year-olds.
You never left fourteen.
Why would you? But, you know, I want that. I, I want that, that family for every kid who leaves Heights. And, you know, and I also know as a high school teacher, the, the memories, the deep connection to your youth and your school are not in my American history class. You're not going to remember the War of 1812. You're going to remember the stuff you did outside of class. You're going to remember being in band or being in choir or being in MCN or being in whatever. You know, those are the, the real human connections that we make. And it's just so powerful to me, the bond that you guys are building for each other. And the fact that you want to sort of take that bond out and, and have it impact the, the building climate and environment is just amazing. You know, as we sometimes talk about in, in the, the role that we're in about like, well, what do we want when we think of a Heights High grad? What does that mean to us? And, and like, we think a lot about that in terms of the programming that we try to put in front of you guys. And the fact that you're taking ownership of the programming yourselves is incredible. And it's a testament to you and to your families and to your teachers. So, so much, it's so powerful. You guys are some of the best that we have, that we have. As I think of your, your fair, like, I want the community to come in. Because, you know, when you were talking about people seeing you and, and there are, you know, this person is this before a word is spoken. You know? I think that, that that would be a really powerful message for some people in our community to come in and say, who and what is Heights High? It would be really cool if we could pull it off and open the doors a little bit. Because I really believe that a lot of people in the community, unfortunately, think that the boogeyman is lurking around every corner at Heights High. And, and really, it's not. It's amazing kids who are working really hard and incredible teachers who are given everything they got. And that's, that's cool. It would be neat to open that up. And then the other thing that struck me about it is about your, your presentation is you're talking about, you know, folks who you need to lean on in order to make some of this stuff happen. But I think that I would encourage you to, to extend that. Like, you're going to be dealing with clubs. And in all those clubs, there are student leaders. And so, I, I hope that you really lean into those people and ask them, you know, hey, what are you seeing, thinking, hearing? What ideas do you have? Because those student leaders, like, you guys are way more embedded in the problems and the solutions than, than any of us, any of your teachers. So, you know, I think that's where you're going to, where you find the problem is where you're going to find the solution. And I think that when you're speaking your own language among yourselves, that's where you're likely to find a lot of, of those solutions. And that's the stuff that I think I'm certainly eager to hear about. So, just thank you. Thank you, thank you. The stories are, I mean, you guys are why we put in all the ridiculous hours that, that we do is, is to hear from you guys and to hopefully put, make, make things available to you that- is is to hear from you guys and to hopefully put, make make things available to you that you're gonna run with. And clearly, you're running with it. And I really want to go on the next trip with you.
Yeah, I don't know how many chaperones roll out.
I'm so glad you're excited to have us back every year.
Oh my gosh, yes, yes, yes.
So you you guys help ground us, okay? I mean, our life is full, exactly. I mean, our, our life is full of more the negative than the positive, okay? Because it's the small minority.
Maybe you should, you guys should come to our Healthy Heights. You guys are included too, you guys are part of Heights.
Fight us, we will be there.
Get some of that tea on Tranquil Tuesday.
Yeah.
You can tell just to look at us, can't you?
But this is, this is the kind of stuff that I wish more members of our community saw, okay? It just gives our school a whole lot more respect. And this is stuff you guys figured out yourself and you've earned it. And you have an incredible support network sitting behind you guys, okay? I keep on looking.
We should actually shout them out, we actually haven't talked about them this whole time.
God bless you guys.
Hold on, wait, guys. Our advisors, Ms. Washington, Mr. Williams, and Ms. Blue, who is not here right now, but she is not.
Here in spirit.
Yes. And she is, not one of them, y'all, like she really come up, she show up for us, so. But um, yeah, we just definitely have to shout them out because they are really what makes our light shine as bright as it does because they believe in us even more than we do. And it's honestly, it inspires us to go as hard as we can.
But but it's pride, okay? I mean, I can tell by a little smile on his face, there's a lot of pride there. Pride is earned, okay? You guys have earned that, okay? And that's just so respectful. And and I gotta tell you another little secret here, okay? I mean, you 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 guys are figuring it out, okay? When you figure it out, you know, life is a little easier, okay? You know, it's 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 not like it's the good life, okay? It's like you're figuring out challenges sooner than your peers. And if you're interested in getting ahead and just going that extra mile to get a little extra, this is, this is what figures it out. And when you do it within, use the word family, okay? When you sort of do it amongst your friends and family, it feels a whole lot better, okay? Cause you all sharing that, okay? And I just, I can't tell you how proud I am as a community member when you guys come and 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 you present to us. It's, and again, usually it's boring meetings. There's always problems to business-type sessions, okay? Sorry, sorry. But this, this, this is good stuff for board members, so thank you very much. And yeah, I think we'd all love to be at this, uh, you know, Freaky Friday.
Thank you all, I, first of all, um, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Definitely the right work. The vision we have, when we talk about our strategic plan and our mission and vision, this is what we're talking about. This is, we, who you guys are is what we want all of our students to be. Um, and so, yes, we will continue to support you. Uh, we are actually working on some of the same issues, all the leaders um, in the schools. Um, and also on my cabinet team as well. So I hope we can come to one of your meetings as you guys plan and share some more information so you know some of the things that, that we're not doing Wind Down Wednesday, you know? That's way better than what we're doing. But we do have some things that we're working on in the district and it'll be helpful to share that and hear from you. Um, I want to thank our um, esteemed leaders and chaperones, who when I asked for this presentation, they said, oh no, the the students have it. So I know they gave you guys the entire thing and I I just, I love that, right? Because that shows that um, they trust you all, but also they prepared you as well.
They always let us take control and that's like, that's what really gives us the opportunity to, you know, be our best selves.
By doing it, yeah.
Like, so while we were in Wisconsin, we didn't know that we had to um, prepare a slideshow um, for our action plan then. So we like really did our slideshow in like under five minutes before we went on stage. And um, that's actually the same, this is, well, half of it is the same slideshow that we have presented today.
Yeah.
And it was the best out of all of them.
Well, what you're learning is that when you have each other for support, you can figure stuff out and that will prepare you for the long list of annoying things that will come down the road. And you're, you know, you just deal. People never give you enough notice for something is due. Or, oh, you mean you haven't finished that project I mentioned yesterday in passing down the hallway? Like, no, of course you didn't, but you know.
Oops, you just forgot.
Or, you know, something else got in the way. And when you have people you trust and you can rely on, then that allows each one of you to take greater risks because you'll succeed with each other's help. And those risks are what lead to, you know, tremendous success.
But we definitely want to promote the the week, once you guys have it, plan it, execute it. So we'll be, so we can share it out with the community, with other schools and in our families. So then other great things you all are doing. So I appreciate you guys, it's, it's great to see you. I've seen you, seen or heard your names in different spaces, so I know we have very special leaders here. But I also know you could pull any other student from M-SAN and they would be just as fabulous. I I already know that, so I thank you guys for being great ambassadors. But thank you for cultivating just a wonderful community of support for students. Uh, because it takes time and commitment, it really does. So thank you all, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it is Marley's birthday. Happy birthday, happy birthday.
Thank you for spending in here with us.
We will have to close up so you can ha- get a little bit of your birthday.
I'm only sorry that the middle school M-SAN kids couldn't stay to hear the high schoolers because you are, you know, an amazing role model for them.
And they are next.
They are for us too.
They're moving up, honestly.
They gave me, I'm like, okay, they can do this, I'm up next.
Um, I just wanted to say, me being in M-SAN since sixth grade has been like honestly the core of my school experience. Um, I was introduced to M-SAN through um, my cousin who's now graduated. So I feel like just always knowing that I've had that space that I could always go back to. Like I've always played a sport, like um, in middle school, I used to play three sports every year. And then once I got to high school, I run track, I I play volleyball. And so even doing that, I always felt like I wanted to come back to M-SAN. So I hope that, um, I know that you guys support us, so I feel like I don't really have to sell you guys to support us. But I just hope that you guys understand, like, yeah.
When you're finished, I hope you continue to to reach back. Because what you have to recognize is that you will be the people who are here next year, they're gonna be looking up to you. And and all of the networks, you know, when you're thinking about college right now, it's kind of scary, right?
Yeah.
But if you have, if you have people you know who are just experiencing it now and you can lean back and talk about what it's really like and and yeah, the good and the bad. But but like stay connected with the kids in the future because you will be an incredible resource and you will bring familiarity which brings us bravery.
Of course, we have to come back to our little ones. These are our favorites, like, we have to.
Well, I want to thank you for your insight. I really loved how you connected the climate with mental health. And particularly in a generation who, I mean, COVID and the lockdowns and the impact that that had on mental health. And I think your peers hearing it from you will be much more powerful than ever hearing it from a, you know,
bunch of middle-aged, middle-aged people.
People, um, but I I'm just really impressed that that you connected the mental health to that and that you are motivated to do something about it. So thank you, thank you for that effort. I think it's gonna be very, very powerful for our school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all righty.
So do we have any other comments or do I get a motion to adjourn?
I will motion to adjourn, I will always motion to adjourn.
Yeah, a second. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Serene.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Enjoy your day.
You too, drive safe.